Okay. We'll call this work session to order. It's Tuesday, May the 9th, 2023, 2:00 PM. When the Board of Supervisors Executive Conference here, Melanie Lane Bisbee. And we begin, any item on this agenda is open for discussion. So the roll call, District 1.
Ross Beers.
District 2, Supervisor English is present. District 3.
Supervisor Chad is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 666662, 220 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. As always, introductions at the work sessions did be done before you begin to speak. You tell us who you are and your title for the record, please. So having said that, you know, this is the Engineering Natural Resources Department Information Update. I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Watkins.
Members of the board, the first part of this is the engineering part. We're updated our special event permitting. Because of all the increase in special events we've had, we updated our application for that. And that's been completed. It is in CitizenServe. So now when people have like bike races, obviously, this wasn't the bike race because this has snow in it, but this is on top of the divide. They'll have enhanced application so that we can get everything answered that we need to. Signing, we did complete our nighttime inspection of all the county roads that we maintain. So make sure that all the signers are rectory reflective for nighttime use. And we completed that last month. And we do that every year. In the 2040, 2015 Long Range Transportation Plan, it had the conditions of the roads that we have. And so we do maintenance, like Marty's crew, they do maintenance. But even when you do maintenance, if there's truck traffic, it doesn't do as well. And you can see from this graph that was in the Long Range Transportation Plan, about 70% of the life of the pavement has a slower rate of decline. And then it drops off real quick. And to maintain all of our roads, you know, is more than we have in funds to do. So we chip seal roads, but chip seal, the DBST double by two minutes surface treatment does not really work if there's a lot of truck traffic on the roads. So you can, you know, I-10, the state highways, Kansas settlement, our major traffic roads. So even when you, you know, the decline goes here, then you chip seal it, and then it, you know, the road pavement declines, you chip seal again. But when you put a chip seal, it never brings it back up to the top of what it was when the road was brand new. I mean, there's still damage to the road, deterioration of the road. And for the roads that have truck traffic, they, one passage of a truck is about the same amount of damage to a road as 6,000 cars. So if you have a lot of trucks on the road, you need to, you know, come up with a plan for the major roads. And these are our major roads that we have. So I want to try to, we're going to prioritize these and try to do one a year, one every two or three years, because it does cost $2 million to do a road, you know, with asphalt. So some of the chip seal roads that we have, if they're just chip seal, on those roads, if they have a lot of truck traffic, we would have to put in more aggregate base and asphalt on top of the road. Shelton is one of them. Shelton has a lot of truck traffic when they're harvesting. And Shelton, by the dairy, oh, not Shelton.
Can't sell.
No. The one right by, that keeps falling apart.
It is Shelton.
It is Shelton. Yeah, okay, it is Shelton, yeah. So it's that and Bell Ranch Road. Those roads are deteriorating that at some point in time, it could be five years, it could be 10 years, that road will deteriorate and chip seals will not last on the road. So we're going to put in a, prioritize all the roads that we have. We have about 17 major county roads and prioritize them of when we should go and do an asphalt mill and replace. And we did do mill and replace on Fort Grant from the corner up to the north. And that was a gold in place recycle because that's a full depth asphalt road. And that's holding up. Yeah, it's holding up. I mean, you still have to do chip seals on those roads every five to 10 years, but they won't last. And then we're also doing structures, our box culverts. We will do mile post eight on Jerome Motrell. We purchased the culvert two years ago. We have a bid from K&amp;G for 236, 799 to replace it. And we have our kickoff pre-construction meeting on Monday. So they will start this work at the end of the month and complete it in June prior to monsoon. And that's at one location. And then of all the bridge structures we have, so we have 61 bridges, and some of them are virtually obsolete and functionally deficient. So we're going to have a consultant go look at all those reports that we get from ADOT because ADOT does the inspections every two years and prioritize that list. Some of those are 30 years old, or they're from the 1930s.
36.
Yeah, more than 30 years old. If they're 30 years old, they're fine. So we will prioritize those to try to replace one or two a year. And some of those are bridges, and some of those are box culverts. Our neighborhood traffic management program, that's our speed humps. We've done a study on San Javier and Rogers Avenue, NACO. San Javier and Sierra Vista, the applicant still wants to have us put in the temporary speed humps. And Jason said he could probably work that in July, August, to put in three temporary speed humps, reanalyze it, see if the citizens in the neighborhood really wants to do that because they get to vote. They have to have 60% of the neighbors that want to install those. On that road there, to really maintain the speed of 25, 30 miles an hour, we would need 11 speed humps on that road. And they pay the cost of the asphalt and we install them.
Where is that street?
San, it's north of Highway 90 on the bypass there.
It's the food station, Sierra Vista.
Yeah, north of City Hall.
Across the bypass.
In a subdivision?
Yeah, it's a subdivision. It's a nice little subdivision.
We, you do those roads in that subdivision?
Yes, that's county. And it, so the, so the one subdivision is county and then it connects right to the city.
Rensselaer's.
Yeah. It's a nice little subdivision. Molson Road, we do have, we're designing that. We have into ADOT, all of our application. We have a million dollars from the service NPO to get it designed. We will be bringing the JPA to the board on June 6th for this design contract through ADOT. And at the same time, bring the costs. We have to send ADOT the check for $90,445, our portion of that cost. But the grant is for a million dollars from the service to NPO. And then we do have 6.1 million in CEGO, or not CEGO, but the state of Arizona, they released their draft budget yesterday, and Molson Road is on the draft. So if it hasn't, we will have 6.1 million for construction. So we need to get it designed so that we can get at least the first phase. 6.1 might do the whole project. In that project, we will mill and fill the existing road, some of it, we have to correct some of the profile on it and add an six to eight foot shoulder on it, depending on the cost.
Nothing with the wash?
Not at this time. We will get it designed though, on the wash, and then try to find funds for a bridge type structure, multi-cell box culvert.
How can I find out what strings are attached with the $1 million?
Oh, that's federal funds, and it's just part of the federal funds that we get for transportation projects. And our cost share is 5.7%.
That's fine. I'd like to know what the political strings are attached to it are. So when, when I can find that out.
Political strings.
Yeah, like you got to have smoke tests or something.
Oh, no. No, there's no, you have to have NEPA clearance on any project with federal funds. After we get the design and the NEPA clearance, we will start acquiring right away. We don't have right away on all the parcels. There's about 44 parcels that still need to acquire right away. So the first part of the design will be to get the NEPA clearance, and then we will start acquiring right away on that project. But there's no, because that area is not in a PM 10 area. The only PM 10 area for air quality in the county is Douglas.
And it won't be long. They're going to get rid of it.
They're trying to get rid of that one, correct? So then, because if smelter's not there anymore, you don't have that.
One occurrence, four years.
Right. From Paulisburg. So there's no political ties to the funds for environmental clearances, besides normal environmental clearances that you have to have for any project you have with federal funds. But it is a million dollars that we're paying, that we will get. Because that area is the serviced NPO. And then Davis Road, we have, we put in for a raised grant for the 22 miles between Highway 80 and North Central Highway to get a study done and a NEPA clearance so that we can start acquiring right away on that. Then Davis Road, mile post five and 13, we have discretionary funds from Senator Kelly's office for 2.8 million. And we need to finish our initiation process with ADOT for that project. And from Central to 191, we're acquiring right away. Hopefully, we'll have, there's 11 properties that we are acquiring right away from. Three of those properties should be in escrow by the end of this month. And hopefully, all the rest of them by the end of the calendar year, so that we can have all that right away. And then we're completing the 100% design. The design stopped at 95% in 2017. So now we're going to go back to complete that design and then have, get funds to, for the construction of that. So the ultimate design for Davis Road from 191 to 80 is a four lane highway in the future, 20, 40 years, you know, depending on what the port of entry does. This phase here that we're doing from Central to 191 is the road will stay pretty much in its exact location and expanding it to the north, to the south, to have two lanes and eight foot shoulders. And then in the future, when the traffic count gets high enough, it will be a four And then we're going to update our road design and construction manuals. The ones we have were done in 2017, still has some old verbiage in it about the departments. And we haven't had the updates to any of our materials that's in that road standard for 30 years. So we will be having a consultant do that. And for our roads that we maintain and roads that are not maintained, we're going to explore the needs and analysis with traffic counts, addresses, how many people live there, including, you know, how many homes and accesses with our addresses serve that road. So we're in the process of doing that. We should know more in three to six months. With our drone, we have flown Willow Lakes because of drainage issues, Bay Acres, Cochise Stronghold, we are looking at the drainage there. We have done a first analysis, we're still figuring some stuff out. And the next flight we will do is Jefferson and Whitewater School because of diversions and dams and ditches that other people have made that are flooding places that they shouldn't be flooding. Flood Control District, citizens' concerns continue with drainage issues. And then we're updating our regs, commercial reviews and projects. We will be having a consultant develop our drainage design manual. We do not have a drainage design manual. And our floodplain regs, we have one page that tells developers what they need to do for a drainage report. When we have a drainage design manual, it's going to be a lot easier on them to give us a complete report. Sometimes it takes six months to get a, for us to get a complete report out of a developer, and that's just too long to, for commercial development to try to wait for. So if we have this design manual, then it will, and we're kind of piggybacking on what FEMA County is doing, because then the consultants or the designers in the state, they're used to all those regs, and that'd be easier for them to submit something to us. Our CRS, Community Rating System, that's where for flood insurance, if we're at a level nine, we want to go to a level eight. And when we get that, then that saves 5% on flood insurance for all the citizens. We're updating our floodplain regs. We will be sending that to ADWR and FEMA next week to have their review, first review of it, and then we will bring it to the board.
Talking about FEMA, I think I got a letter in my box just today that they are looking at the floodplains.
Yes.
There is, and you got that on you?
Yes, that is, right here. So FEMA, FEMA has started studies, so that Bisbee-St. David, they started in 2022. Benson-Wichuka City Service and Hereford, they started in 2018. We will have final maps in 2026. We've met with FEMA last year, I mean, last week, and they, we saw the drafts of Bisbee and St. David, where we'll be taking to the St. David Draft Map, to the St. David Flood Control District and their floodplain district to show them and get their, some comments back from them. But we won't have the final maps until 2026. They will have a public meeting in 2025.
You can comment now.
Yes, we can comment. So we look at it. Joaquin checks all the hydrology on it and stuff to see that we're, help, you know, if we agree with what they're doing. And then our MS4 area, we are being audited by ADQ next week on that. And that's our storm sewer system for more of the populated areas. So it's at Benson, Bisbee, and Douglas. We are doing a watershed study on, well, we put in for a brick grant to do a watershed study in Wilcox Basin, for the whole basin. I've talked to the Corps of Engineers to get a study done in El Frida on Rucker Creek. And then Wilcox NRCD wants to partner, wants us to partner with them to get a study done on Turkey Creek, that they will put in for a WIFER grant, and we will do that with them if we can decrease the flow that's coming across Kansas Settlement in that Turkey Creek's running. This year was about two weeks of flooding. And so we want to try to do a flood control and recharge project up there. And the first step is to get a study, an overall study. And then after that, once the location would be picked, we could go into design plans.
So we're able, we're able to do that study?
No, they're putting it, NRCD is putting in a WIFER grant.
Okay.
To do the study.
To do the study.
Probably about 250,000 to do.
In El Frida, are we doing that?
We want to do that with, yes. Well, either we will do it or silver jackets from the Corps of Engineers will do it. I need to, I met with them last week, but I need to call and get some stuff defined. If not, we do have the funds to do that study, just because of all the flooding that happened in El Frida. And even with all the flooding that happened in El Frida and St. David last summer, FEMA only has one repetitive loss structure in Cochise County, and that is in St. David. There's only one repetitive loss that people have claimed, put in claims to FEMA. All the other people that have been flooded, either don't have flood insurance or didn't put in a claim.
I might know that lady. But that is interesting. That helps to.
Yeah, we don't have, yeah. So this is just some updates from FEMA, you know, because flooding, flooding changes, the pattern changes over time, and flooding's happened, you know, you're not going to get rid of flooding. But with some of the mitigations, we can control some of the flooding of where it happens and how long it happens. But with climate, you know, the rain, we're not going to get rid of flooding. The hydrology, you know, that's the volume of water when it does flood. Like, if you increase your infiltration, then you decrease your flooding. And that's a project we're doing on Three Canyons as a research project. And then the hydraulics, you know, stormwater does not stay in the wash base, the wash banks itself. Stormwater will go to the washes. It goes, it floods the area. And that's what we're trying to update with our flood mapping. And some of these studies were done in 1984. They didn't have the tools that we have today, and they were just the best estimate that they could have. And then with the LiDAR mapping that we had done two years ago, we're getting more detailed and precise flooding maps. And we'll have base level engineering for everything on the west part of the county, which will have, because right now, some of the floodlines, they just, you know, go halfway upstream there and then they stop. This will, with the LiDAR that we have, they will actually have the levels, you know, it's going to be 10 feet, it's going to be three feet in the flood zones. So that, that was really good that we have that. And we should have that done, FEMA should have that done by the end of this calendar year.
The result, one of the results of that possibly would be more people would have to buy flood insurance, and then they would be able to make claims whenever they flooded out, at least.
Correct.
Can't really lift their house, but they can at least have insurance.
And we will, with the Bisbee study, we are getting a floodway, which means you can't build in a floodway because that's reserved for the floodwaters. Leslie Canyon Pond, the consultant cost is 219, 250 for design. And once this is completed, we send it to ADWR, and we were trying, they have told us that they'll pay 50% of the cost to get this out of jurisdictional requirements. So at the end, by the end of the year, we should have the design on this project. This is Bay Acres. Washington, this is Palm Grove Wash. So Bay Acres is back up in this area here, but this is Palm Grove Wash, and this is where we have an improved channel down here to the culverts off of Avenue A. And it's about a third of the way done now on this culvert. And then we will, once it's designed, we will go after grant fundings for construction and cost of right away, if the board decides that we want to do that. And the Upper San Pedro Projects, Riverstone, if I need any help on it. We have a REPI grant for 900,000, and it's in design and engineering through the State of Sierra Vista from CCRN. This is Horseshoe Draw. We repaired the inlet last year. This, it's, still has a little bit of water in it, but what, next month, we're going to get this outlet here, these culverts, we're going to de- increase the head wall coming down because this is actually full of water, but it's scoured out, and then to fix all the erosion. So we'll have that done.
And the Bisbee effluent, does it help? What's the, what's the benefit of Horseshoe Draw?
Horseshoe Draw helps the flooding on Paloma Trail and the washout that happens there for those residents. Paloma Trail's not a county maintained road, but that's what, and sediment and the head cutting that's happened. So there's head cutting coming from the San Pedro River back up, you know, big cap, little Grand Canyons. And it's also, since we're capturing all the water in there, and the pond, when it fills up, you know, the water is released through these three culverts here. So then it gets back into the wash and you're increasing recharge to the aquifer. But this, this helps flood concerns downstream for residents and the recharge of the aquifer.
It's estimated recharge to 255 acre feet this past year because of that, so.
I didn't know the numbers. I knew when we started the project, but hopefully, I'll go.
Yep. And then the Bisbee effluent, it's, that project's going good for the design. This is Coyote Wash. So this is Coyote Wash itself here, this portion right here. And what we're doing here is preventing, constructing a diversion dam to take the two-year flow over here through the existing sand gravel pit and then release it back into the wash. And this is to restore the natural hydrograph of the wash pre-development. That's what that project's doing. And it's in design. And that design will be completed by the end of this fiscal year. And we do have one and a half billion dollars of a REPI grant for construction on that project.
Where, so where does the water run down? Does it go into the wash?
Yes, the water goes in the wash here itself, but it's at such a high velocity, that's an increase in erosion. And so if we go back to the natural hydrograph pre- his, pre-development upstream in Sierra Vista, it will restore this wash to its natural flow rate.
Does the City of Sierra Vista still claim that all washes are county responsibility? Even the ones going through Sierra Vista?
Well, if they're going through Sierra Vista and they're dedicated to the city, it's the city wash, it is the city's responsibility.
They recognize it?
I mean, we do, you know, we do have funds that we have budgeted to help cities maintain their washes. They just need to ask. And they have, I have, City of Services has received funds from Flood Control District. Yes, the washes in there that are in the city limits are the city's responsibility.
In the question, you're not quite done. I do. I'm good. I have the, this road page. You're talking about deciding which roads need to be maintained and what don't. That's going to cover like that, for a guy that comes to our meetings every single time, you're going to be like addressing things like, situations like that, right?
We will address those on anything.
I know, but, well, we can help answer some of those questions, but he comes every time. But I get calls weekly from other citizens that have the same. There are other ones. So, but that's going to be an overall evaluation, and you're going to say, like he says every time, 30 houses on this road, no houses on this road. And I know that situation, I've talked to you personally, so we don't need to go into that, but that's the kind of thing you're doing.
We'll have the list of any roads that's eligible from state statute. It has to be physically on the ground prior to 1990 for us to even add it to our maintenance list, unless it's brought to county standard. All roads that are brought to county standards, meaning chip sealed, about $500,000 a mile, then we are by state statute required to take those into maintenance if someone brings that up. But the roads that are dirt roads now, we will analyze what we're maintaining and addresses of roads to come up with a qualification of.
Right. We have a county standard for gravel or dirt roads as well.
Yes.
Does that count?
Not for, not to, no.
Okay.
So right now, we're just gathering.
We're just gathering.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know that's not going to result in anything immediately. I just thought, I just wanted to make sure that's what you were actually talking about.
Well, we have a resolution for our add drop policy, and we're following the guidelines from that add drop policy.
But it's going to take some time.
It's going to take time to do it, yes.
And then the gentleman that comes every board meeting.
He's going to keep coming.
He's going to keep coming. And we've had conversations about, that's a.
I've talked to him four times, multiple times.
We've had conversations.
And I've given him our policies and our procedures of, the state statutes of how you can and can't maintain.
It doesn't really bother me anymore, but I, but that, but that is what we're doing, really, is looking at what can be done. And I didn't realize that it had to be chip sealed. And before 1991 would.
Or 1990.
I mean, 1990.
Has potential to be.
Even if it's not chip sealed.
Yes, correct, because it's a native, it would be treated as a native primitive road.
Okay.
With limited maintenance.
At one time, so, and more on that subject. At one time, we were told that if we, if we wanted a road to be added, if it was qualified, we would have to take out 16 miles somewhere else, add 16 miles on this particular road. So would it be helpful, I did a lot of driving and research and making notes back then. I'd have to start over pretty much, but I do have some recollection of it. But would it be helpful if we made recommendations of roads for you to just look at? I mean, just, just my experience.
You could give me roads to.
Okay, because then that would kind of help you get started in those communities, because some aren't going to change, and we all know what, who, which ones those are, but.
The overall goes to get all the road.
To get every single road covered.
No, what about that? We can't do.
No, no, not covered, but to look at all the roads, to analyze all the roads.
And so that we can present that information.
Oh, I know how many roads there are. I can't even drive on all the roads.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at all the maintained roads and the service they provide and non-maintained roads that have the potential to be a maintained road.
1990, correct. 1990, correct.
And we don't have funds to do all the roads.
Oh, I know that. That's not exactly what I meant. And that's not at all what I meant. Okay.
And, you know, talking about that, there is some divisions, homeowners associations, they maintain their roads. And then the other option that we also presented to him was the Road Improvement District, Road Maintenance District, like what High Mills has. And there's 36 acre subdivisions that have homeowners association that they pay to have their roads created. And they do that. Yep.
But when you want it free, you're not going to want to do any of that.
Right.
People are always willing to let someone else's road go. Would have been a good thing.
Well, I have I have extensive research.
All right, well, we've been asking for that for some time and it's not as quick and simple as, uh, as, as Jackie pointed out to me a long time ago, not particularly on this road. But I said, well, could you set some criteria or something? She said, and you have no idea how many of those roads there are around the county. And so we can't treat one differently than the other one, you know, so that's why we need to come up with some
Criteria.
Solid criteria so that when we're asked these questions, we'll all be speaking the same.
And we will have that criteria and present it to the board.
Right.
That's really good.
So that would, that would be.
That'll be a separate work session just.
Yep, just on that topic.
All right. Any other questions about engineering and natural resources? Thank you. Good, good, uh, good analysis. The, um, we have time between you and the next meeting.
Yes.
You have your 30 minutes.
Yeah, the next meeting is at 3:00 PM in the Board of Supervisory Detective Conference Room. To determine the necessity or level of simulation appropriate for Miracle Valley.
Madam Chair, it's going to be in the hearing room since we anticipate a bigger crowd.
Okay, but there's a possibility that we will be in the big meeting room if everybody that loves Miracle Valley does that. And it'll still be 3 o'clock. Can we put a time limit on how long?
They're speaking.
They're not speaking. It's a work session. It just, it's just, uh.
Just does.
Right.
Okay.
There's, there's no public comment. However, we anticipate a big crowd.
So one, one thing we've heard a lot of, and that's why we said a time limit because, like, I'm not tone deaf. I've heard this. You don't have to tell me 10.
Yep, yeah.
But we need Dan's presentation. We can ask our questions and then I think we'll be done.
Are we adjourned?
Correct.
Now we are.